Let's go ahead and stand and say the fudge to begin the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin the meeting, let's start with roll call. Dan Ruddinghouse.
Here.
John Estrich.
Yep.
Bridgette Hayes here. Curtis Ward.
Here.
Earl Moore. We have a forum. So first off, I just want to say thank you for everyone that's taken time out of your day to come here. Our, this meeting tonight, I called because of the vote that we had on Monday to completely remove the disc golf course from the town park. I was, anyway, we voted four to zero to remove it, but after that, I got, personally got a lot of feedback, good and bad, about the decision. And I thought it might be more prudent to have another meeting and ask the council if they would please vote to delay the removal of the golf, of the baskets until we actually had time to hear from other people that had some recommendations to compromise between having 18 holes that, that some say that are not safe, that come into the pathway, that go over the road versus the other side that say, keep 18 holes. I think that as a community, I hope, we can come together for a compromise. So that's kind of the purpose why I asked everyone to come, and I appreciate you guys coming as well. So I guess what I would like to do is just motion that we delay the removal of the equipment for the disc golf in the town park until Monday, the October 16th, our regular meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Sixth.
John seconded. Is there any discussion?
That would be the day that we'll make that decision.
Well-
Two weeks is plenty of time for him to come up with a proposal, I think.
Well, I envision that at the regular meeting where it's in the big room, where there's plenty of room for people to come to, it's, you know, a week and a half away about, that, that people can hopefully think and come up with recommendations, like I said, that some type of compromise, and then they can present their plan to us. And then we can decide then what to do. We might decide to delay some more. We might decide, no, let's get rid of it, or we might decide, you know what, you guys have made such a great argument, let's keep it. I mean, we have, I mean, that, that day is a day for people to come with recommendations to where it addresses things from both sides. And, and where we go from there is, is up to the council. There's no, no set plan for that day, just this day is, let's just delay until then to give people a little bit more time. Any other discussion? Let's take the vote. I mean, all, all, I'm sorry, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, four to zero. So we're gonna delay until the October 16th meeting, and I hope that the people that are smart about disc golf, that can come up with some suggestions, or even before that time, to, to please, you know, give that to the council and let us-
I think we can do that now, if you guys are open to it.
Okay, are you, the testimonials?
We've all been here, we're all ready to do that, if you're ready to hear it.
Well, it's, it is a confined area, and like I said, in, in, I really just-
Well, you knew you were gonna have a lot of people, you should have put it, why didn't you move it to a different room? You saw, I made, hang on, I made four different posts with hundreds of likes and comments. It was pretty obvious that this struck a nerve. I don't know why you guys weren't prepared to just move the meeting right up the way, and let's have the, I mean, we're already here, we've already taken time out of our schedules to be here.
So, let's take the time.
Okay, well, you're, you're the one that made the decision, not me.
Please, can, can, can-
You're right.
You guys are the ones that hold the power, man.
I did.
Can, can-
If this was just gonna be a motion, let's go, we, we all, we could have, just tell us we'll come back on the 16th.
Well, I put that in my post. That's what I put in my post.
But you also said, this was to bring people who are in support. If you weren't gonna hear anybody, why, why did you tell us to come?
Can you just hold on for just a second?
Hang on, just, everyone, am I parodying what everyone feels right now?
Can you hear me, guys?
I know I'm wrong, but, but-
I'd really just, just like to ask you if you wanna hear from people tonight, or do you wanna wait until next Monday to have some more time to think about a recommendation?
If people can be civil-
Does it hurt to hear them twice?
And talk once.
I, I won't say another word. I'm, I'm happy to let everyone else know.
So let's form a line right here. Anybody who would like to give suggestions, come stand right here. And then, how much time will they have? You know-
A day and a half.
Day and a half?
It, it would be nice if it was kept to two minutes.
Okay.
State your name before you speak, so I know who you are.
I have a feeling that there's gonna be a lot of repeats, and so, again, the vote is already to delay till Monday.
Sure.
So if you just keep that in mind.
Just, I want, go ahead.
Next Monday.
For Food for Thought, my name is Joe Metzler. I've been at disc golf for, for 20 years, and it's brought a lot of peace and personal development to my life, and a lot of community to my life, and a lot of meditation to my life. And if there are concerns about disc golf courses, we need to hear them, 'cause it's a community involvement thing. But I don't wanna throw the baby away with the bathwater, because there's over 9,000 courses in America. This is something that happens in towns. There are disc golf courses, it is safe. These frisbees ain't gonna kill nobody if they, if you get hit with one. Most people can't film over 150 feet anyhow. So the concerns are valid, but somebody that's got some experience has gotta talk to appease people, 'cause it's a, it's a quality course y'all got, it's gonna bring a lot of tourism, it's gonna bring a lot of people to your town, and it's gonna give a lot of young people a walk through the woods with an objective to think about whatever's on their mind. Ain't nobody coaching them, this is an independent sport, that you'll work through breakups, you'll work through people passing away. It's a meditative, spiritual sport. I'm not trying to be silly, but there's not a lot of things you can do with somebody breathing down your neck bossing you. But disc golf is something you can do with your buddies, do alone, and, and these aren't gonna hurt nobody. And if we need to redesign certain holes to accommodate the walkers, that's something the disc golf community would be glad to do. We're not saying it's, this is our part now, nothing like that. But let's just think about, you got, you got a quality design course that is bringing people to your town. Let's not, let's just think about it for a second, that's all I wanna say. And I, and I've got friendships that are more established in the disc golf community, who are away at a tournament, who can better represent the sport than me, but there are people from Cincinnati would love to help if need be. So that's what I think.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you think it's out of line to have it redesigned for nine holes instead of 18?
Well, it depends. So that's a nice idea, but you got such a beautiful park there, that I don't think that that's necessary. I think you could, but I think if you kept it at 18, it'll be a bigger draw, you could host tournaments. A lot of tournaments ain't gonna go to a nine-hole course. So if, now, cut out where they're going over the walking path, if there's danger, we don't want it. Disc golf people are peaceful people, honestly. Now, there's some rowdy ones, whatever. But as a whole, it's a Christian-based, a lot of the professionals are Christian athletes. It's a conservative-led sport, and I think that aligns with Brookville, and I'm just going on a limb here. So redesign is possible, but I think that 18 is highly attractive to people that would come here. If you make it a nine-hole, that's cool, but 18, just, let's take a look at what people's concerns are, and that's, and the disc golf community can work with it.
Do you, do you think that some people from the disc golf could sit down with some people that walk?
They would love to.
And work together and win ideas?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I want the walkers to feel safe, and if somebody's been spoiling it, that's a shame. But that's not the community as a whole, that's not disc golfers as a whole.
Let me ask you a question. When you, I'm, I'm sure that disc golf runs into walkers all the time.
Sure.
So what is the normal agreed, like, I don't know if it's written or unwritten rule when it comes to golfers and-
You're supposed to use sense. You're supposed to use sense. Don't throw where you can't see, that's a common rule.
Okay.
You got a spotter, but if you can see somebody's walking, you wait, and you don't throw.
Okay.
And you let them walk by.
Okay, 'cause I've seen some people comment to say, I don't like these walkers, they're in my way.
That's, that's, that's bad taste, that's bad sportsmanship. I mean, if it comes down to the true essence of the sport, it's common sense. If somebody's acting bad, they gotta quit.
Okay.
Do you have names of folks who have designed courses that you could share?
So Adam Jones is a gentleman that's, runs a pro shop in Cincinnati, and he is a tour director for, so the pro tour has a stop in Kentucky, he's the tournament director. He's designed Osage Grove in Goshen, Ohio, and he also runs the Natty Pro Shop. And he's a great advocate, he's very knowledgeable, and I did talk to him on the phone. He is away on a tournament, but he'd love to work with you with anything to preserve the course. That's all I know. It's good for the youth, it was good for me. It's not something, it's not a bunch of weirdos, it's normal people enjoying themselves. You know what I mean? I'm not, I mean, it's got stigma, you know, it's got stigma, but the truth is, it's people enjoying themselves. Veteran themselves, it's, that's all it is.
If a shot goes errant?
Yes, sir.
Do y'all yell four?
Four, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I'm telling you, most people are not gonna have cannon arms. You're throwing these things 150 feet. Now, once you spend some years, you can get them going, and then you gotta be responsible for where that goes. So there might be signs that say, I've seen this, careful, you're in a disc golf zone. So if that helps liability, if that helps the walkers, that's cool. I've had positive experiences with the walkers. I take pictures of they got a group, I mean, we've had all kind of positive experiences with people out there. So I'm sorry for the people that caused trouble, so.
Oh, sorry, are you guys in, oh, you have a question for him?
Yeah, I just have a question for him.
Okay, sorry.
So like, in, in your sport, if someone does get hurt, who's liable for that?
Well, we'd have to think about that, because if the signs are in place, you're assuming risk when you go anywhere. The softball, the whack-in the head, just the same as a disc could. So with signs in place, I think the liability could be addressed. 'Cause there's all kind of risk in a park, not just a little 150-gram frisbee. And I know it seems intimidating, but there's other risk as well.
Oh, I know, 100%.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Joe?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yes, yes.
Are you next?
Oh, hang on a second.
Oh, I thought she said make a line, I'm sorry.
Marty, are you here about being a walker in the park? Do you think there's any walkers that could get together with some of these people and work together to, to maybe redesign the course so it's safe?
Possibly, possibly. I mean, you know, there are benches, there's one bench I know right near a goal, or whatever it's called, a basket.
Yeah.
And that's not safe. I've walked, I've walked around a corner, I checked bluebird boxes, I walked around the corner, and people couldn't see me, it was a family, they weren't being rowdy.
Yeah.
They didn't see me, I didn't see them, till I got around the corner, it's like, whoa, you know? That was a surprise to me.
Yeah.
So that kind of thing can happen there. And we did move several bird boxes, because we didn't want them to be hit by frisbee, you know, what are they called, discs.
Do, do you think that you could come up with some people, some names, and we could set up a meeting between the, I hate to call them size, but the two groups?
Probably.
How do you know about to get those people to be interested? Like, I'm a walker, I'm not a disc walker. I'm a walker, I'm never having a problem with family or friends.
Well, I think we might be looking for people that do have problems, so that we can help either address them, or solve them, or come up with something else. So just, just for the whole group, and have anybody here and anybody who isn't here, if you know of someone that, that might have some concerns, like walkers and/or, you know, all you golfers, just come up and give us your name and contact information, and then, you know, I don't mind sending out an email to the group team or whatever, so to get everybody together. We just need the right people, we need to bring the right people in the room, I'm just not sure who that is. So if you think you're one of those people, just please come up at the end here and, and write your name and contact info down, and we'll see if we can set up a meeting between everybody, maybe next week, something like that.
We had a line, didn't we?
And Joe, did I, hey, Joe?
Can I say something?
So is it possible to, um, 'cause is it possible to take some of the baskets, instead of just redesign the course? Is it possible to take some of the baskets?
Move the tee pads?
No, just take the ba, well, okay, move the, wow, the tee pads. Kind of collapse certain holes that are maybe not so good, and then if you have a tournament here or whatever, put them back up and have the 18 hole? Okay, something like that. I mean, we can take the baskets down, right, without, we just take them out.
They're just temporary anyway.
Yeah, they're temporary baskets in there.
You could take them down.
That, that way, we, maybe like, most of the time we'd have nine holes, but then if we had a special day, we could say, hey, guys, today in the town park, there's a, it's disc golf day, or whatever.
That's a nice idea.
And then put them all up.
But I think if we eliminated the potential liabilities and kept it at 18, that would keep everybody happy. If we got away from the walkers and kept it at 18-
Just another suggestion.
That's a good idea, it is.
Just another suggestion.
But yeah, there's a lot of possibilities, as long as we just don't throw the baby away with the bathwater, that's all I'm thinking.
Well, there's, there's this possibility also of going up to what is a football field and put a couple holes up there, I mean.
Whatever y'all think, we're just trying to-
Yeah, there's a lot of people up there, but they won't get hit, you know.
Uh, sorry, who's next?
You can go.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
If I could just say, you know, my name's Keith Abbott, and I, I, you know, I don't really know all you, but I, I had written to the town council a few weeks ago about this issue, and it's predicated, or I, I was almost, when I was down walking one day, was almost hit by a frisbee that came at me and just landed very, very close to me. And it, and I contacted the council and said, you know, it just seems to me there's a safety issue here, and, you know, and I've thought from the beginning, I'm not gonna mention any words about it, that I, I don't have a thing against frisbee golf, or disc golf, or whatever, I think it's great. It just seems to me it's in a bad place, you know, that there, there, if you're looking for, you know, I know there's, everything I've read about this, from looking about articles written by professional organizations in frisbee golf and so on, I mean, they outline where you should be, I mean, and just in general terms, where these courses should be built. And that, you know, they talk all the time about avoiding issue areas that have, you know, pedestrian traffic in it. Avoid areas that have, you know, don't put them where you have pedestrian, don't put them in areas where you have playgrounds. Don't put them in areas where you have parking lots. And it just seems to me that, you know, I, that where this one is particularly located just kind of violates all of those rules. And can I just, can I just finish before you all start belittling, you know, jumping on me? I'm just giving you my general impressions here of what, what's, what's going, happening. And anyway, you know, so I just feel like that there must be a way in which, you know, this could be done in a, in a manner that's more safe than it currently is. Because at some point, somebody's gonna get hit by one of these things. I almost was hit. And, and I think I, as I pointed out to the council, I did some research, this has happened throughout the country. There have been many instances that people have been hit by these things. I, I think I noted to the council in a letter I sent to you, I found an instance in a, in a town in California that was sued by somebody that was hit by one of these frisbee golf courses, lost her eyesight. The town settled for $3 million. There's liability here from the town's part. And, and, you know, and I just don't know, and if, and if, if there's a way in which it can be designed in the, the course down, down in the park that, you know, that, that people that are using the park for other purposes aren't sort of in the line of fire, so to speak, then that's fine. But I, I don't know anything about that, and I'm not a frisbee, I, I can't be on a committee, 'cause I don't know anything about designing golf courses or whatever, but it just seems to me that-
Can we just please respect the people that are talking?
You said two minutes, respectfully.
This is, this is the town meeting, thank you for your assistance, but this is the town meeting. Just please, everyone stop talking while someone else is talking.
I mean, I, you know, in terms of being a town, I'm not sure that I could really contribute to being on this group, because I don't know anything about designing golf, golf courses, and what, you know, I, I don't know anything about it. All I'm saying is that, you know, it, it needs to be done, you know, that, that, all I'm saying is, the safety is the first issue here. And I'm down there practically every day, I almost got hit by one, I know it, someday it's gonna happen. And, and isn't there a way in which you can look at alternative locations for, for a frisbee golf course? Maybe it's the, maybe it's the golf course over Brookville, maybe it's the county park? I, I don't know, there's other places that you're not going to have, you know, you're not gonna be in, in an area where people are being-
Weak, yeah.
So, so anyway, that's kind of-
Thank you, thank you so much for your input.
Would you consider walking to a different location?
Well, I, I, I walk all over, I mean, I, I, I walk probably at least five to 10 miles every day, and I've been doing it for 15 years.
You're asking, would you move the golf course to a different location, would you consider walking if you felt unsafe?
Well, that's certainly a possibility, uh, that I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm speaking on behalf of people that I know are, mainly the people I see walking down there are people that are 60, 65 years old, you know, my age or, or older, or young families with young children or something. And, and these are the people that are, are basically gonna be targets if somebody makes a mistake.
Thank you so much for your input, let's, let's go. I appreciate it, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, please present a couple of facts.
I don't wanna walk anywhere.
John, hang on a second, John.
Respect that.
John, just, everybody, just, very closely, let me just present some information.
You can please stop for a second, this is a council meeting, hold on a second. You can talk.
I, I wanna walk there. I've enjoyed walking there, it's a beautiful place, it was.
Why was designed?
This came after the trails. So we need to make a way to either work together for something, because the trails came first.
I have three young kids, underneath seven years old, me and my family walk down there often, and I've never felt threatened. Nor would I put them in a situation where I thought we were going to be threatened. That's, if he, if he feels threatened in that environment, I just simply ask, would he consider walking to a different location? Maybe the upper track, because there's not a frisbee golf course up there. But the idea of that golf course in that setting was so that the, the pro disc golf people could enjoy with their families the natural environment, 'cause that park is beautiful.
Yep.
And many of you, I would venture to say, has never walked in that park until frisbee golf was there. And I know some of you do it daily with friends, and you bring new friends in there, so that's, that's all I'm asking, is if, if he does feel threatened, if the signage did not deter him to say, hey, you're, you're accepting this risk, would you consider walking to a different location? I wasn't being mean or anything else about that, I was just-
Well, I think the goal is, can't we all just stay along?
I agree.
I, I think we should focus on coming up with a compromise, and both people-
Can I please just present some information that I, that I gather?
Can I please finish?
John, call on me, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you just hold on for a second?
No, absolutely.
Go ahead.
You, you did call on me, am I correct?
Yes.
It's okay, I'll, I'll call on people from now on, it's okay, go ahead.
Just, and, sir, I certainly respect your, how you feel in there, I understand that. Just so, I personally spoke to the superintendent of the Connersville Parks Department, the Richmond Parks Department, the Rushville Parks Department, the Batesville Parks Department. All four of those parks have disc golf courses that run all through the park. You're throwing over shelters, you're throwing next to playgrounds, right next to it. In, in Batesville, in Connersville in particular, probably in much tighter quarters than we are in Brookville. Every single one of those superintendents told me that they have never had not a single complaint or incident report that they have ever heard on file or know of. And that's with some of those courses that have been there for years. And that, so just, I'm just, take that information for, I, I, and I understand that when you see something new that you're not used to, it looks scary and it looks intimidating. Which is why I think, at least myself, feel so passionately about saying, before we just make a decision to scrap the whole thing, you know, let's get some more information, and at least, at least get some actual facts heard, because as many of have been said, you, myself included, until last year, know nothing about this sport. So that's just some information, that's just some data, and just, just, you're welcome to call them, you're on your, I've made one phone call, never had to wait. The superintendent of parks picked up the phone, yeah, so.
Can we, can we keep it down in the back, please?
When I, um, when I told, when I told the lady that she may have been the assistant, but when I told the person at the Conners, no, I'm sorry, the Richmond Park, and just explained the reason for my call while I was digging up some information, she audibly just, like, shockingly laughed, like, she couldn't believe that we were having, that, that we were having this issue, because in a city as big as Richmond, they, they've never had an issue. And, and I just, I, I just, I just have to believe that if those four places can figure it out, certainly, we, we can figure something out that works for everybody, that, that's it.
Amen.
Thank you.
Bridgette, can I say something, please?
Of course.
Here's all the adults in here.
State your name.
Angie Westerfeld. We see all the adults in here. If you guys could just look out here and see all the kids. This town needs something for the kids. We have nothing in this town for the kids to do. The Brookville pool, what about, they still, I have grandkids. I have six grandkids that go down there. I have a mom, who's my son-in-law. He's put a lot of time in down there, guys, he's put a lot of time in. Nobody paid him to do that, you know? I'm, I'm speaking of the kids. I have worked for the school corporation for 36 years, and I have thought of the kids for 36 years, that's why I've stayed. And now I sit out there and I look at my grandbabies, they go down there all the time, enjoy that. Why would anybody want to not let the kids enjoy and have fun? I mean, what else do we have in Brookville for them? Curtis, what else is there in town?
Very little.
You know, we got quite a few bars in town, but what is that doing for the kids? Let them have fun.
We got a brewing company.
You know, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking out for the kids. You're here, Bridgette, all the adults here. Take a look, just walk out there, that whole place is packed out there of kids, you know? Let's do, let's keep it for the kids.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name's Brandon Monroe. I think the assumed idea needs to be maintaining the 18 holes, and then finding a compromise with any problematic holes that might land near, like, tables and stuff like that. Like, that's reasonable, like, a reasonable ask to modify. But I think the main goal should be to make some, like, modifications that, that maintain the 18 holes. And if that's found to be not possible, then, then consider the nine holes. But I know you guys seem to be really struck on the compromise being cutting the course in half, and I don't think that's the, the best way to go about it to start. I think everyone's super willing to, to modify things and make, and it seems like we have some really good help that could, that could make some good suggestions there on the possibility of that.
Well, just remember, the council has already voted to, um, take it, to remove it. So I think we should start with that and, and work towards a better solution for everybody, if, 'cause that's really where we're at right now.
Hopefully everybody understands, this came from the concern of a liability. You know, there was nothing said until we were put on notice as the town board that we have created a liability for ourselves.
We gotta live out of love, not fear, though.
Well, and again, if you guys are willing to sign the paper that says any liability for this, when it, 'cause it's gonna, you don't know that it hasn't happened yet, yeah, there hasn't been any reported, but they're probably afraid to report it because of, they'll get this.
You put a sign out, then the liability's on the participant.
Yes, yes.
You need, as long as you guys didn't make a sign, and then-
You know, as a teacher, I, I'm really concerned about your future, because every time something happens, you're gonna face this critique.
Uh, yes, Roy, go ahead.
Roy Hall, taxpayer of Indiana, property owner of everything in Brookville. You guys do things on a slap knee agenda. You put it in, we paid for it, leave it in. Put up signs, I'm a safety specialist at work. There's things you can do to be smart and safe. There's, could be certain days that you play frisbee golf more than you walk, or make people aware that you're playing on certain days. There's also plenty of walking courses in Franklin County. I don't walk, I don't play frisbee golf. But as a taxpayer, this board needs to protect my government money, all of our money. You spend it, let's do something right, let's, don't do something wrong. If you wanna take something out, well, just take walkway.
I wasn't on the board when they did that, so.
Yes, sir, and then, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I just wanted to say, like I said, I'm not no exercise freak, I don't walk, I don't play frisbee.
You can't tell that by looking at it.
And I'll tell you what, I have been down to there, to that park with my golf cart plenty of times, and I have not seen anybody rude to anybody. I appreciate you all being nice.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, see you.
Why, why?
Take care of your dog, no, when the chief doesn't get you.
Say your name.
I'm Michael Taylor. Alright, so I think one of the things that we in the disc golf community kinda, why you had such passion from us is 'cause you guys just went nuclear. It went from a little thing on, you know, like, the, the town meeting, uh, paper, and then you guys just voted to take it out. So there was no, you gave us no chance for it, you just went, it's gone, and deal with it. And it was within like 24 hours that thing was supposed to be gone, and luckily, through some negotiations or whatever, it's, it's still there now. But like, that was just wild. You guys went from nothing to gone, not, let's get some feedback, let's do whatever, it's gone.
Well, one of the issues is, it took a couple days after we did that, and the public really realized that we do things, that, you know, there was no compromise with, with people. It was, that's commensurate there. It was, that's going to stay there.
That's, that's...
We have just now started open...
You either keep it or give rid of it.
But now we have just started dialogue to say, there has to be a solution. But the first couple of days after this, there was no, they were digging in that it's going to stay there because I want to walk there, I don't have a car. I, I mean, you should hear, well, you've read it all, not all of it, but most of it.
So, sir...
I'm not on pace with you, so I don't...
I know.
I'd like to speak for myself and my decision and I will say that, yes, I was shocked that I, uh, that the suggestion was to take it out, but I will tell you from living in the community from the past year, having it there, I personally have, um, spoken to many people that don't want it, that didn't want it, that hated it, constantly telling me, hey, when are you going to get rid of the disc golf? When are you going to get rid of it? Constant.
And do you have names of those people?
Just mark all your own record.
I wouldn't put anybody's name on there.
I'm still talking.
The way y'all act on social media.
Okay, I'm not...
Because she would bully him.
I'm not talking...
John, hang on, no, John, hang on, no, John. No, 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 no. I'm not going to, I'm not going to let this man talk about bullying. When you DM'd my wife over comments that somebody else made on her post trying to scold her, you DM'd me things that were not, so please don't sit there in your little seat of power and talk about bullying, John. Now, that I'm not going to let happen. I'm not going to sit here and let you lie and talk all smooth right now when we know the truth.
Can you just please stop?
Is this when Lee Greenwood starts singing?
Please stop.
I'm not lying.
Right? This is peaceful.
That's a comment that's made in this...
Can you just hold on for a second? I want to... Okay. Back to what I was saying.
Thank you.
I personally, um...
That's not for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, when the motion was made, I, 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 I personally made an emotional vote because I had heard these people complain for a year or more about the disc golf. And I never really thought about getting rid of it, it never really even crossed my mind, but the, when the motion was made, seconded, and then three people voted, I did vote with them. My vote didn't matter because three already voted, but I will say that that next day, after I made that vote, I'm just going to tell you, I felt terrible because I knew that I voted emotionally because I don't want the course at all. And I did what a lot of people have said, but I didn't, I personally wasn't proud of that vote because I didn't do what I was supposed to do in terms of governing.
So what does that mean as far as like the two weeks...
Hold on, just because I took a breath, hold on. Because when you govern, it's important to hear from both sides. And that's why the very next morning, I called the council and asked for this meeting because I think it's important that we hear from both sides and I think that there's room for compromise on both sides. And so I just wanted to explain my vote because you asked, why did we go, why did we do that?
So, but you, you guys have already voted to get rid of it.
Right.
So what does that even mean, like just pushing it off for two weeks, is there even a chance for it to stay?
What, sure, can we come to sixteen? What happens on the sixteenth?
Well, I think what we hope for is there'll be proposals brought to us and say, can we move this one here, can we move that, can we go up on the football field? And I heard somebody say, there's youth football, but that's not a problem because nobody's going to get hit. So, what we would like to do...
Maybe draft, draft a sign that tells about, you know, be aware of this or this area. So come sixteen with some proposals.
Yes.
This meeting tonight was just to try to tell you folks that we understand that we acted the way we did, we're willing to open to the public, which is something that the last board needed to do.
Well, this meeting is appreciated.
But you guys, we've asked you, the experts, to come back and say, do we have offers from McCounty to move it over there?
Okay, that's, uh, that's a lot. They offered to talk about it. That, that was brought up and...
It's a liar.
So that might be my, my issue because I maybe misunderstood what John Peis was referring to, but he said, nobody from the council had to come to him because he would take it to the commissioners.
So he did take it to the commissioners, I was at that meeting, and he said, what we'd like to do is look at putting the disc golf in the county park and I'm going to get with some people and present it to the park board, which has to be approved there first, and then we'll bring that to the commissioners. And so that is a very, it's an idea at this point at the county.
Right, but they've not said that they will take it to the county.
Of course not, no.
So that needs to stop being said by certain people on the council.
Do you guys have a lawyer or somebody that could draft a potential warning sign that would protect the city?
We do have a lawyer when asked the question, does this make us more liable, the fact that it's been brought out, and he said yes.
So does having people keep about rounds, so if we're worried about liability, let's do it with the softball fields, let's do it with anything.
I'm not worried about liability.
I, I would be more afraid to get hit by a softball than a, a disc any day.
To tell you the truth, after we got the complaint, one of, uh, one of the things that our lawyers suggested is to just put a sign up.
That's right.
Which is what I thought we were going to talk about on Mondays, hey, let's, let's come up with a sign.
That's what everybody else does.
That's what I, I thought, so that's, yes, that suggestion is already out.
A lot of, uh, a lot of disc golfers use an app called Udisc. And hopefully I can get statistics to let you guys know how many people utilize your course every day.
Fourteen hundred and seventy-three over six, or three hundred and sixty-five days.
Okay, and not everybody uses it. So you could double that.
That's different players, not rounds.
Do what?
That's different players, not rounds.
I don't, I don't.
So the statistics might look, how many people utilize this in a positive manner.
And also not everybody uses Udisc, so that's not completely accurate. That's not the only way to...
So everything's hypothetical when you say, it's really busy down there.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back, Carla.
Carla, I think it's important that, that you do get together with everyone and people that can keep an even keel there and discuss it. You can't discount, I've never had a problem with it. I've walked and we've waited and they've waited, it's been fine, but that doesn't mean that we can discount the feelings of other people that have felt unsafe. So I think you're doing the right thing, getting together with everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Abbott, what time do you typically walk?
Different times. It's not on a regular basis, but...
Would you be okay, like if there was a, like a no-disc time period to where it was a, you would have to walk?
I'm, I'm coming at this totally from a safety issue and a liability issue. And, and like I said before, I mean, I, I honestly, I'm not a lawyer, but I've read enough about what's happened in other jurisdictions to know that if something happens, there's a liability issue. There, there is just, I don't think there's any question about that. And then the second point I'm making isn't, no matter where you put these discs, they're still going to be very close to where people are involved in other activities. And that being the case, doesn't it make sense to pursue another, another option that has far more, like this gentleman was saying, here, move it up on the football field so that, so that it's, it can be used practically anytime except when they're playing youth football, which is practically non-existent. I mean, they're little.
Yes.
And you know what, or, or move it to the county park or up to the, I mean, there's lots of areas that would just completely take this liability issue off the table.
Thank you.
And it was planned there too.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
They have a lot of signs too.
Hold on a second, yes, sir.
Hey, my name's Jonathan Margum, so you can ask any of my friends here, I don't actually like to play frisbee golf, but I support the kids here. But I look for this from an outside view and it's kind of really important to realize this, most kids are going to be in school, most people that play on the golf course probably aren't retired, and if they are, they can't throw as hard, right? Sorry. But anyway, the reality is, on a normal school day, a normal work week, the elderly people will have safety. Most, the chances of somebody being out there Monday through Friday before four o'clock is probably pretty slim. It's more likely they'll be on their Friday evening, you know, through Sunday, or if it's a summer break. But other than that, ninety percent of the time, they're going to have safety in the morning on their walks. I mean, we're talking about compromise, they have a huge amount of time that there's probably no chance for anybody to be down there. I took a nap down there Monday on the side of the river at eleven o'clock, it's like, I'm tired, I sold a car, it was like, I'm tired, I'm going down here, you know? So I took a nap on the side, I didn't see one frisbee golfer out there. I seen a guy mowing, but when you're down there at that time of day, because I, I work down at Second Chance Press Racing, I'm always in the park, there's nobody playing frisbee golf at that time. So you guys got to remember, like, we're talking about compromise, we're talking like compromise on the short, small window, like summer break or in the evenings. I mean, you're, you're, if it's summer or something like that, it's heat of the day, you're going to have the youth out there, you ain't going to have elders, right? You don't want to, and I'm a nurse, I have a nurse, nursing degree, so when you're elderly, you have to be careful when it's hot. Kids can handle this stuff. You know, we got to look for them as a big picture, they got like a huge portion of the day, that they're safe, they're safe. So I say, if we're looking at compromise, I say we already got it, right? Well, let's put some restrictions up, right? Well, they can't play until after four o'clock. Well, they ain't going to be there anyway, right? So let's not talk about taking it away. I don't even like to play frisbee golf. You can ask any of my friends in here if I like to play, and I don't like to play. I did play as a kid, but I'm here to support, like, if you come out here, there's like twenty or thirty kids sitting out here and they all like to play it, and that's why I'm here to support them. So big picture, let's look at the hours of safety. I mean, there's huge hours, they're not going to be there, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am, in the back, yeah, thank you.
Chris Tursey. I agree, safety is an issue, I'm discounting what you're saying, but to move it over to the town park doesn't give access to the kids that are here in town. They can't walk over there. That, that park closes in the wintertime, so how do you get in to play it in the wintertime? Because you play in the winter. Moving it up onto the football field? No. For those of you that don't understand frisbee golf, it's just like your golf course that you have up on the hill. Is your, your drives, are they all straight? Nope. They've got banks, they've got curves, they've got obstacles, that's the challenge. So you can't move it to a wide open field that's flat, that you just throw straight lines. So, I mean, I understand, but these golf, these golf courses are in all parks that have walking paths. So again, we just compromise and figure out. And then lastly, which holes are the issues so that we know how to compromise and move the course to make it better? So tell us which holes are the problems.
Well, so far we haven't had a problem, I think that's the issue, there's not been a single incident reported.
We don't.
From, from what I have heard, the problems are the one that crosses the road.
Which one is that?
Yeah, that's...
Five.
So, yeah.
We'll change it, we'll change it. Cars are dangerous nearby drives.
And the one, and the ones that actually cross the path, some of them cross them twice. So those that actually cross, the ones that are like next to it, there's nothing you can do if you want to, you know, put any hole in the park, they're going to be next to a path, but at least the ones that actually cross it, maybe that might be something to look at. At least that's what I've heard, yeah, yes.
Dan Ball, I, I don't disagree with the safety and the concerns that people have with feeling safe or, or anything like that. My really thing is kind of a common sense from a liability standpoint. You know, the town could get sued over something somebody here says today. The town could get sued because there's flashing lights instead of, instead of traffic lights, if they push the button and they flash. I've seen several people almost get mowed over up there, I've never seen anything in the park. You know, so we take risk every day as a society, as individuals, you know, if somebody's down there and they're winging things and they hit somebody, they should be held accountable, right? We have stuff in place to hold people accountable for doing things like that. As a, as a town, you know, with the liability thing and being afraid of the liability thing of it, you know, I think I heard you, Christine, earlier, Curtis, you know, where do, where do you draw the line? Do you take out softball, do you take out the tennis courts, do you take out the basketball courts? Any town can be sued for any reason at any given time. Will you be successful?
We know that.
You know, comes back to the attorneys, right? What's the likelihood that we would be held, that we would lose something like that? The insurance company would actually have to step up and pay. Because to be honest too, the town wouldn't pay it, the insurance company would pay it, our premiums would be adjusted. So what's the likelihood of that compared to what this brings to the community and to the kids and what it can bring in from, even the revenue from a business standpoint? People come out of town, we all know how that works. So my thing is, you know, maybe on the sixteenth, in addition to just, um, the ideas that could come out of it, maybe we also take that into consideration of, let's use a common sense approach to what kind of liability are we really adding to the town versus what we already have?
Thank you. Did someone else, yes, yes, ma'am?
Susan Platt. I walk that course all the time because my kids play that disc golf course and there are walnuts all over that path and I just step on them, you know, because it's a public shared space. And to reiterate what Dan was saying, like, you're taking a risk. If you're leaving your house, you're taking a risk. And we could, we could have a compromise where people could walk there with the right signage, make people aware that disc golf is happening and then they can make that decision for themselves. But I've been there when people are disc golfing, walking, it's always been common courtesy. This doesn't have to be this emotional thing, it's a public shared space. We can share it civilly if we just put the right pieces in place so people understand what's happening and just show some common courtesy to one another. Because, I mean, could the town not be sued if I fall down and break my leg when I trip over a walnut in the park? I'm never going to do that because that's ridiculous.
But it could happen.
Right, it could happen.
It could happen.
And I could be hit by a softball and honestly, when I walk, I'm more aware of the softballs than I am of the disc golf. It's not right or wrong, we can do both in that park. It's a beautiful park, we just have to make room for each other without all the emotion and the drama and use some common sense, get the signs up, and then just be good to each other. There's room for both.
Here's an email that I received and says, why are we, why are the walking paths in disc golf indirect paths with each other? Doesn't look very well thought out of in the first place. And having my vehicle hit while just driving through, I don't even go to the park anymore. So what do you tell this lady?
What if a softball, a softball could have hit a vehicle? But you're parked at the fairgrounds, you know how many cars, my...
But again, why, how do you answer that question?
I would say that...
Quit driving through the park?
I would say that's a chance. What about golf carts? I could cross a golf cart, I mean, we could just go on forever and ever, like, well, what about this and what about that? Just look at where you...
You only have to worry about walnuts if somebody picks it up and throws it at you. That's where the liability comes out.
What was your last name?
Kelsey Gurr, G T R N D T. Do you have a map of the park so people can actually reevaluate the holes and get back with you on that?
They're on that table in that hallway.
You have to go by all these people. On the UDisc app, there's also the overview of the maps that came down with the UDisc app.
Yeah, but it'd probably be easier for people to, or to hand it off if you wanted-
We don't, I don't think there's a current one.
Okay.
The one that I emailed the board was the-
Is this what you want? Yes! I made those for this meeting!
But that's not current, that's not current.
Well, you didn't tell me that!
That's the original, it's been redesigned several times.
You're the gentleman that designed it, yes.
Well, write your name on this paper for the weekend.
And I wanna, I wanna thank Adam, I've heard a lot of people say it wasn't thought out, and it wasn't well designed. He spent over a year of walking that course, of taking and intentionally putting the golf locations in areas where they were going to be the least intrusive. So, personally, Adam, I wanna thank you, because I know you put a lot of work into that, and installing them and designing it. No matter what comment that he had, to feel like you're underappreciated, so-
Yeah, don't worry.
At least one of us does appreciate you.
Well, I wanna thank you too, because I read that you walked with him.
I did.
And was able to, and then came back and made a motion to-
I also pulled in other course designers, so it wasn't just a, something that was just a quick throwing thing, there were people who have combined to probably put in over ten courses together, also walked with me, who run tournaments, and people that are in the community, and to get their input, you know, on all this stuff. And every hole and every tee was designed in a way that walkers and throwers could see each other, there were clear lines of sight, we have to adjust it, we have to adjust it. I mean, I compromised, even during installation, there's a gentleman who lives at the corner of Eighth and, is that River Street? That didn't like the location on the baskets. He came out and told Brent right away, Brent came to me and said, hey, can we do something about this? I said, sure. So moved it, that very day, filled the hole that I had just dug, and went and put it in a different location. So they're, I mean, willing to compromise for sure, and I think that we've shown that already.
Is there a way that we can have an updated map?
Yeah, through, we can look at the UDisc app.
So telling everybody that this is not, that was a waste of five dollars.
That was the very first-
Much to get reimbursed.
That one was the first one submitted, and we worked from there. You have to start somewhere.
How soon can you get the map to us?
If you go to UDisc right now and type in tail one, or you can see the updated one right now.
I'll text it to you.
I just, I don't think, like, moving it to somewhere else is a good solution, like she had mentioned, you take that ability for kids to go to it, or if you take it out, you're taking away from the youth. Like, you want them outside and playing, that's great, but if you take it away, that's one less thing they can do. This place is not accommodating for youth kids.
You're right. Thank you. You're right.
You guys have a quality course, and 279 exists in Indiana, and they're making it work. So, for those that eyes to see, it's a nice course.
Also, there's no guarantee that the county is gonna go with it, they've already said that. So that's just a-
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just maybe he has some of the thoughts there, I mean, the county, I'm totally agreement that it's hard to get, you know, there for a lot of people who would utilize the course. John Heiss called me yesterday and said the same thing, like, hey, I'm presenting to the other, what is it, the commissioners? And, you know, we'll come back with something, if you wanna have a proposal ready, if this doesn't, you know, if this falls through, then we'll go from there. But he said also, I asked the question about opening it for other times of the year, he said, yeah, we're already talking about that. Because they wanna, they think they're missing out on revenue for other things, but, so that, I mean, it's the potential that the park can be opened year round, especially if something like this had to happen.
Well, you can still build a golf course in the county park, regardless of what happens in the town park. I mean, if I know disc golfers, you want as many courses as possible, don't you?
Only if it's approved.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if he's interested-
And it's a lot of work, too.
That doesn't address the problem of town kids being able to walk to the town.
No, no, I'm just, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have, I just, okay.
Marty, is there a way that we can get walkers, get their names, and contact information, and get them with a couple?
I suppose, I mean, I don't know all the people that walk in the park at all.
Well, you know, some that might wanna be on it, I would think.
Try.
And you're the only one here.
It's Marsha's volunteer.
I'll volunteer to be one of those walkers.
You guys can sign this, sign up with your name and phone number and email address before you guys go, that, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I would like you all to get together and work through this, so we can do something for all parties.
I just, if I could, just do a little spiel here. You know, I've lived in Brookville all my life, I'm seventy-one years old. And me, like most of the people in here, don't live in Brookville, because it has a disc golf course. You could live in Brookville, because you can walk down the damn street at night without getting beat up and mugged, or whatever else. You can drive your car down Main Street without getting hijacked. You can go to one of the best schools in the state of Indiana. My granddaughter, who I'm very proud of, it happens to be homecoming queen, is gonna graduate from high school with credits to be a junior in college. You can't get that everywhere, but you can get that in Brookville. So, here we are arguing over, you know, it's amazing, people buy houses on Main Street for a reasonable price, make them beautiful mansions in Brookville, Indiana. Go to Laurel and do that, or Richmond, or anyplace. I don't mean to cut on Laurel. But I mean, the values of Brookville, you guys are right, that the town is gonna implode if we don't have this damn golf course.
Sir, did you go out your language, there's children.
I'm sorry.
It adds value, the disc golf course, what we're saying is, it adds value.
Well, I understand that. But don't be quoting that it's a tiny little, you know, watch what you, I don't care if you complain.
Prove us different, Dan, town council, prove us different.
Well, I'm trying to explain to you why I think most of these are people, yeah.
John, the motion to adjourn?
No, you will hear that again.
John, I mean, the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
You will hear that comment come back, I promise.
You don't wanna hear anybody from the hallway, you can see how we're reacting.
I think we've done it.
No, no, it was a joke. And you will hear that, when my lawyer comes back, you will understand what that's about. So just keep rotting your mouth, because I save everyone up.
We have tons of kids out there that are wanting to do this. We have almost zero incidents with disc golf issues, there's been sixteen incidents regarding the pool alone, and yet we still have this pool, and there's no meeting to shut down the pool and pull the pool out. I'm gonna comment to you, John, because I did a comment, a reply on my own personal Facebook page from an uncle who doesn't even live here, regarding politicians and money, that was not regarding this town council.